The town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, May 15th, 7:00 PM. I will ask everybody to stand and counsel in the area. Please, as elected agents.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Okay. Tonight, we're going to begin with a very special presentation to the middle school robotics team VEX IQ and Technology Student Association. Those are a lot of work, but they are very exciting. And the town council is extremely proud of the job that Plainville Schools do with the students that participate in some of these robotics competitions. The town council has a, we have a proclamation, and we have copies for each one of the students. I'm going to come to the podium and read the proclamation, and then we're going to hand out these certificates for each one of you that have participated in it. So I'm going to ask Councilwoman Tompkins to help me with that. Would you mind helping me hand those out? And I'll go down and read the proclamation. We have a lot of people here. We're going to get you all on film. So I'm wondering, can we have everybody stand? That's going to be part of this.
Yeah, let's just fly up here if you'd like.
So they can just stand along with their teachers. They're very important also. They stand up here, we're going to get you on TV.
Stanley, come on.
Yep, so we can film this way. Yep, I have it in there. Smile on TV, everybody. This is a long proclamation, as I said earlier, but it's so important that we recognize the job that our Plainville School System is doing. And these students and their teachers are an example of the excellence that is always in Plainville Schools. But this is a very special group of young people that continue to do a marvelous job. So I'm going to read this, and each one of you will get a copy of it when we're finished. It begins, "Whereas the VEX IQ robotics is part of the robotics education and competition foundation that provides programs with services, solutions for communities to foster the technical and interpersonal skills necessary for students to succeed in the 21st century. And whereas through the continued support of the Pettit Family Foundation, for the third year in a row, teachers and students from the Middle School of Plainville were able to enter into local, state, and worldwide competitions, where they excelled and secured state TSA/VEX IQ robotics competitions, qualifying them to proceed to the world competition in Louisville, Kentucky. And whereas students participated in the VEX IQ robotics competitive areas, earning BrainBots teammates Chris Brocek and Nathan Masco the Excellence Award, along with the Driver Skills Award, and together with Salt Crew teammates Nick Grabowski, John Marfia, Jacob Malloy, and Mitchell Williams won the Teamwork Challenge Award. And whereas students participating in the Technology Student Association, TSA's competitive areas earned Dragster teammates Tim Paradis, Nick Grabowski, and Zachary Finkelstein first, second, and third place respectively. Teammate Zachary Finkelstein and Matt Bonney taking first place in the TSA-VEX IQ area with teammates Alicia Corian, I hope that's not so bad, and Ellie Keegan bringing home first-place rewards for the Technology Bowl."
Yay!
And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the town council of the town of Plainville, on behalf of our citizens, do hereby extend to all the teammates of the TSA/VEX IQ Robotics State Championship and their technology education teacher, Camille Westfall, and music teacher Laurel Schwartz, our sincere congratulations on a job well done, and our best wishes for continued success in the future, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 15th day of May, 2017. It is signed by the Plainvill Town Council, Catherine Puglisi, Scott Saunders, Danny Carrier, Robert Siotto, Rosemarie Moranti, Deborah Tompkins, Christopher Wazorko. Before I finish, I did want to let you all know that I had communicated with our state representative, William Pettit. The foundation does provide some funding for some of these. He said he truly wished he could be here tonight, but he had three other obligations, and he asked me to please extend his hardest congratulations for a job well done and keep up the great work. So congratulations. Councilwoman Tompkins is handing out as a replica of the proclamation that I have that I will present to the teachers, and you can bring this to school.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. Would you like to say anything on behalf of your students? You've done such a great job. I'm very proud of you.
Hello, my name is Laurel Schwartz. I'm a music teacher and also one of the VEX IQ coaches, and we couldn't be prouder of our students. They spend a good, hard year innovating, changing their designs endless numbers of time, looking at data. They run their robots. They see how well they score. They decide they didn't score well enough. They reinvent. Wheels fall off. Robots drop. They have to become creative really quickly. They'll even go to competitions, look at how other people are designed, and say, wait a minute, we can do some of that too. And they will do things like change wheel types or add a wheel for more mobility in between competitions. So they're striving for excellence each and every day, and we are incredibly proud of the work that they put in. This is a rigorous program, and it demands the very best from them. And now, my colleague, Camille Westfall, will say something wonderful.
I do just want to mention that some of the students are also going to the national TSA. So you had the groups that went to the Worlds in Louisville, Kentucky for the VEX IQ, but then you have teams going to a national TSA down in Florida that are competing in robotics as well, but also in Dragsters and in Technology Bowls. So that's going to be happening in June. And so we are just really bursting with pride. They have done such an awesome job, and they've become role models for all the younger students that want to join the program. So thank goodness for Mrs. Schwartz. She always keeps us in line. And again, we are so proud of everybody involved in this. And also, one more thing, like, thank you so much to the parents. Like, your support of us throughout the school year is just, we couldn't do it without you, and neither could your kids. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
I noticed that some of the students brought a couple of their projects with them. Are those things that they can actually do something tonight? Or would they just like to explain to us what each one of those, it's a machine, what they do?
Is your control up here?
No, they could do a little on the table.
So while they're setting up, just to let you know, when they go to the playing field, which is four by eight, and there's lots of YouTube videos if you wanted to check it out, they are working with another team to score the highest amounts possible. So there's a lot of cooperation, there's teamwork. When they went to Worlds, they had to deal with teams from literally all over the world. So they had to figure out, how do you communicate and plan your strategy with teams that don't speak English as a first language? So the whole idea was they had to deliver objects from one side of the field to the other. They had to strategize. Well, do we want to go for the high goal for five points? Do we want to go for the low for three? And then, if you end up on the bridge, both robots balanced at the end of the match, you know, that's an additional 25 points. Whereas if there was one robot, it's just amazing.
And there's also programming that they have. They do driver skills by themselves. They also have to program. They have to be able to explain their designs to judges that come. And so there's, it's a very, five layers that they have to do to compete at this higher level.
And we didn't mention the research. Mention the research project.
Oh, and they also have to do a research project on their own, where they take a topic from STEM, and then they will research the effects of STEM on the community. And then they will present those projects to total strangers. No adult, other adults are with them. So they are learning the public speaking on top of everything else that we're expecting them to do. And this is the third year in a row that Plainville has won the state championships. There's only been three years of competition. All right. Does anyone have any questions about the robots? I'm sure the children are still excited to answer those.
So those are all built from scratch?
Yes. These are pre-made parts. They're similar to Legos, where Legos come in different sizes. And they're joined with little pegs, and they have to decide which peg is appropriate. They also have, we have to learn things about structural integrity. Because when you have this design here, where's your support for the middle? So this one bows in a little bit. And so then you have to decide, can you handle the pressure of competition? Or is your robot actually going to break? And so there's gear ratios that they learn about, and torque, and speed. And there's always a trade-off between torque and speed. It's complicated.
And do all teams start with the same building materials?
They start with the same building materials. There's a basic kit. And then they start scavenging for parts. And they find things that they need. And they look on the web, and they do some research. And they come up with innovative designs that other kids have not used. Some teams, if you go to other towns, all the kids' robots look the same. Our children's teams never have the same design. We expect them to be their own creative force.
When we were there, the competition was livestreamed on the internet. And I think it's June 9th, CBS is going to do a special on robotics. It really, I mean, I don't want it to sound like us tooting our own horn, but there were 50 teams at the state competition. And there were 308, almost 400 teams in the world? No, eight?
It was three, no, 800, wasn't it? No. It was a lot of people. It was a lot. Yes, a lot more.
So you have all these winners from Plainville. And you really said a lot about the support that we receive, and what the kids do, and the parents, and it's amazing.
It really is. We are very, very proud of them. They come week after week. It's a large time commitment.
And I know somebody was holding a Dragster. So I do have to say that of all the cars at the state competition, we had the top actually five cars. One of ours was disqualified, because it was actually too light. Because they have to have a combination of weight and design before they race. So we had the top three, and all three of them had the option to go into Nationals. And we had, for the tech bowl, you had to answer all kinds of questions. And you had to hit a buzzer, and answer first, and...
Yes.
So that was involved a lot of studying on your part, to be able to answer those kind of technical. Can you give us a, like, a question that they asked you?
One of the questions that we had was, what is a corn-fueled substance that's used instead of gas? And we had to answer ethanol. And then you had to describe the difference between a nuclear fusion and a fission. And there was many questions.
She should be commended. She did all that studying on her own.
She asked me some of it.
And this is where parent support comes in. It really is amazing.
All right. Do any of the students, would anyone like to come up and tell us about what your favorite thing was about these competitions that you went to? Anybody want to come up here and tell us about that? We've heard so many wonderful things about your accomplishments. Maybe you'd like to tell us what your favorite thing was. You don't have to, I'm just...
Jake, you're a very good speaker.
So probably one of my favorite things about VEX was getting to come after school and see everyone coming together. And, I mean, we just had, what, four people on our team, right? Me, Mitchell, Nick, and then there's John, who couldn't make it tonight. And it was cool to see everyone's ideas, and what they could come up with, and what we could do when we worked together. So that was probably the best part about it for me. Thank you, talking to school.
I would have to say my favorite part about robotics would be the really bond you form with all of the people in robotics. Because you get to meet people from all around, all different places. And for doing this for three years, which is Westfall, which got me into it in sixth grade, it's kind of, you figure out what you want to be. And if you do like robotics, which I do, and I now want to go into an engineering field when I'm older. So that kind of helped me do that.
All right, go ahead, Zach, go ahead. Anybody else of the students who'd like to speak besides Zach? You don't have to. It's all right.
My favorite part of robotics was being able to see everybody else's robots and learn from theirs. Because just this year alone, I've learned so much. And this is my first year in being where I am today. I wouldn't have been able to do it without seeing some of the other robots and designs even within our school.
Anybody else? Well, we are in great hands with these wonderful young people. They are so poised. They are so articulate. And they clearly have proven to be champions, because they won. And I want to say, congratulations again. I would guess that when you go to Plainville High School, you'll continue to be involved in all of their robotics performance and continue on to do great things. Thank you very, very much to the students for coming tonight, for your teachers, and again, many thanks to the parents. You know, this is a lot of work. I know that you probably have to do a lot of bringing back and forth, taking them to these places. But they are wonderful young people, and we're very, very proud of what they've accomplished. So keep up your job, because it's all worthwhile. And congratulations again, everybody. Thank you for coming to visit us tonight. We're very proud of you. I guess we'll continue on. That was exciting, and such pride we can take with these young people and what the schools are offering and the Plainville School System. We do not have a public hearing, so our next order of business is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Do we have a motion? Okay. Have a motion in a second. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements or reports? Does anybody have any announcements or reports to make? Yes.
The Conservation Commission, which I am a member of, has been a very busy group over the last month. Just make another announcement. It's gotten great publicity. Got another announcement that the CSG for Project P are now available here in town clerk's office, library, and senior center. Did I get all the locations?
Ms. Westfall, you are required for pictures now.
Library, yeah. Senior Center. Rec Department. Rec Department, that's it. Also, not this past weekend, but one more weekend ago, they actually did two events. One on Saturday, it was the river cleanup. And it was my first river cleanup. And it was a great activity. The commission is very committed to continuing in this, and they've done it for many, many years. And then on Sunday was the fishing derby. And I can't say it was my first fishy derby, because I did go to them back in the 1950s, here in Plainville. But anyhow, I was able to be there to help out. And I will tell you, the level of enthusiasm by the children that participated, or by the families, shown by the families, was just really off the charts. It was a great outdoor activity. They were there for the whole morning. And it was really a very big success.
Anybody else have anything to report? I'll give a brief report on a meeting that I was invited to up in the state Capitol. State Senator Henry Martin from the 31st Senate District invited elected officials and representatives to a meeting. Senator Vasano facilitated the meeting. And this was basically a look at what the Republican budget proposal was. They had published a few days prior to. Again, nothing is settled. And I certainly came away with the feeling that I understand one side, and what they don't think is going to be workable. And today, there was another announcement made by the governor about what he thinks should happen. So it sounds like we're still pretty far apart, and nothing has really been resolved. But a couple of points that were made was that in 2018 and 2019, there's two reasons for the decline in the $5 billion deficit. One is declining revenue, the other is increased spending. That sounds simplistic. That's obvious what happens when you end up with a deficit. But simply put, the revenues are declining. He told us a few stories, one of which, which is interesting, is the top 15 wealthiest people in the state of Connecticut. Two years ago, they paid $600 million in state income tax. Currently, the revenues from those wealthy folks are $250 million. So there's been a massive change. Some of it is due to those folks leaving the state. Some of it is due to whatever has happened. But as time goes on, losing those revenues with not being able to adjust your expenditures is becoming an increasing problem for the state. There's another observation is that, in general, school populations are declining. Therefore, there is support for no minimum budget requirement for local schools. If the school's population declines, currently, we need to fund the school at the prior year's funding. We cannot go below that funding. But there's growing support now to get rid of the minimum budget requirement, because school populations are declining. There's a proposal to put tolls back on our highways. If we put the tolls at the borders, we're going to be penalized by the federal government for that going on. Now, if we put tolls in the interior of the borders, it's going to start moving traffic. If you put tolls all along I-95, maybe that traffic would move over to 84 and get to where they need to be in a different fashion. The bottom line was, I think that the message is, more study needs to be done. If there's going to be a serious proposal for installing tolls on our highway system, it's not as easy to fix as some may think. And I guess that, at the end of the day, the solutions for what's happening in Connecticut are not going to be simplistic. They're not going to come easily. And it's going to have to be everybody pulling in the same direction to get done what needs to be done. So it was an interesting view. State Senator Henry Martin were there. William Pettit, our state representative, was there. A lot of bets from Bristol. So there were people in the room that are up there listening to the proposals every day. They're going to be voting on some of these things. Some of the things that have been happening are IT, human resources, and attorneys are consolidating at the state level, so that there's not so much redundancy in human resource functions all across the state departments. And some other things, such as privatizing nonprofits. So where it ends up, I guess nobody knows right now. That was like a snapshot of what the Republican leadership in Hartford is looking to accomplish. I'm sure it'll be, whatever it ends up, it's going to be part of the Republican plan, part of a Democrat plan, and then the governor's in there somewhere. So lots of conversation. But I thought it was interesting about where some of our revenue has declined. And it is, a lot of it is from those wealthy folks that pay a lot of income tax. And they are moving out of our strait, and we're not getting those tax revenues any longer. Okay. There are no other announcements? We'll move on to appointments and resignations. Do we have any appointments tonight? Or resignations? Okay. Board of Education, Mrs. Saunders?
Good evening. Andrea Saunders, 55, Fawn Drive. I don't know if this is on. Is it? I don't think so. Oh, maybe it is, okay. First of all, I just want to thank you very much for recognizing the middle school robotics team. We're very proud of them. And I know Dr. Pettit wasn't here tonight, but in case anyone's not aware, he is, the Pettit Family Foundation is the reason that team got started. They had initially given them a grant of $6,000. And from the story, I understand, the kids, the kits with all the parts had been ordered, and they were kind of in a room, and nobody was really doing anything about it. And some of the kids got together and said, what is this all about? Let's like, get it started. They got Ms. Westfall involved. They got Ms. Schwartz involved. And the next thing you know, they've been state championships for the past three years. So we're very proud of them. And that's why, you know, for the board, we're so worried about the budget, because we feel like we've made such strides in such areas that a lot of other districts don't have. And we don't want to have to lose funding and have to decide which of these programs we're going to have to keep or not keep, depending on the money. So hopefully, they get things together at the state. All right, next, I just have a list of things. It's a very busy time at the schools. Thursday, May 18th, the high school has their spring concert. It's at 7:30 in the high school auditorium. This Saturday is the Family Fun Fest. It's from 10:30 to 3:30 at Linden Street School. And also on that same day is the junior prom at Hawks Landing. And let's see, on May 30th is the fifth grade awards presentations at Tophelan. June 3rd is the senior prom at AquaTurf. June 6th, as well, we know it's the Wheeler Referendum, but that's also the Night of Excellence Awards at the high school. That's where the students find out what scholarships they receive. And last but not, oh, and then next Thursday night, that is June, no, May 25th, is the super senior banquet at the AquaTurf. And then last but not least, graduation is June 15th. And from what I understand from Dr. Brum, we are going to still have it outside despite all the track problems. And unless there's weather, it'll, hopefully, it's a nice evening, and we'll have it outside. So I think that's it for now. Does anybody have any questions? All right, thanks again.
Board of Town Attorney. Attorney Masterrani, do you have anything for us tonight? Thank you. Board of Town Manager, Mr. Wade?
Yes, I have several items. The first of which is bond sale. The town recently sold $3 million in bond anticipation notes as part of the roadway bond program. Bond anticipation notes, or bands, are used as temporary financing vehicle for large projects until the projects are either completed or have reached a certain monetary threshold. Five bids were received, and a low bid was submitted by TD Bank in the amount of 1.22%. The note will be for the period of May 17th to February 15th, 2018. So very favorable. So very favorable rate. We have plenty of bidders and, you know, the interest, you know, on the $3 million will be, you know, is already covered in the budget and accounted for. Next item I have is the public information session regarding Valley Water. A public information session to discuss the results of the water test will be held on Thursday, June 8th at 7:00 PM in the middle school auditorium. Representatives from the Public Utilities Regulatory Agency, or CURA, the Department of Public Health, DPH, the Plainville Studi-Ten Health Director, and Valley Water Company officials will attend and be available to answer questions regarding the quality of water and more particularly, the operation of the water system in Plainville and certainly as it compares to water systems in other communities as well. Residents will have the opportunity to make comments and ask questions from the state officials that oversee the operation and water quality that is supplied by the Valley Water Company. I anticipate that this will be a very informative meeting. I encourage all interested citizens and residents to attend the public information session on June 8th. Next item I have is the mill rate recommendation. The state budget is still being negotiated in Hartford and there is much uncertainty about how much Plainville will receive for education, other municipal grants. Additionally, while there does not seem to be much support for the governor's proposal to have municipalities pay a portion of the future retirement fund, the legislature has yet to fully eliminate this possibility. Further, the current legislation mandates that on July 1st, the mill rate cap for motor vehicles be reduced from 37 mils to 32 mils. Again, several key legislative leaders have said that they do believe that this will change and that the motor vehicle mill rate will not be lowered. Because Plainville mill rate is, will be above 32 mils, and below 32 mils right now at 31.99, this decision will need to be known, you know, to the town council before setting the mill rate. Finally, the governor today proposed an amended state budget that would further reduce state aid to municipalities. If approved as proposed, the impact of Plainville's mill rate would be significant. However, both the Democrats and Republicans are expected to release their recommendations later this week. And how these, you know, how different these proposals may be to the governor's latest recommendation remains to be seen. For all of these reasons, it is my recommendation that the town council wait until either the state finalizes their budget or the end of the legislative session, whichever comes first, before setting the mill rate. Legislative session ends on Wednesday, June 7th. That should still leave enough time for the tax bills to be prepared and ready for mailing by July 1st. The financial dashboard was distributed in your information packages for this evening's meeting. We also posted this on the town website, I believe on Friday.
Yes.
So I'd like to briefly go over that. Not much change from the previous month. You know, we're tracking as we have, you know, nothing major. As far as total town budget expenditures are concerned, we've expended about 80% of our expenditures. This is the total town, which is town and board of education. Two-year average is usually about 81.7%. So we're running a little bit behind. At least the two-year average, but still pretty much in line. The general government budget, we've spent 87% where the two-year average is 86.85%. So pretty much, you know, in line there. Board of Education, we have spent 75.15%. Two-year average is 78.12%. So our trends, you know, are pretty much mirroring the last two years, which is, you know, pretty much in line with what, you know, we've anticipated. Municipal solid waste is running pretty much, in previous years, a little bit below. Our overtime, you know, continues to run over, you know, police overtime, roadways overtime, buildings and grounds, roadway, snow, roadways, and buildings and grounds, snow, those are capped. The other two are going up slightly over the next couple of months. But nothing out of line of what we've seen in previous reports. As far as revenues are concerned, with respect to all revenues, we've collected 98.5% of what we have, well, 98.5% of our total revenues that we budgeted. Generally, when we get to, over the last two-year average, it's been 100%. So we've, by the time we've gotten to this level. I would point out that last week, the, let me just start by saying, the difference is about $875,000, you know, for the remaining revenues in order to reach 100%. Last Friday, the state bond commission met. While some people were critical of the fact that they were bonding more dollars at a time with the financial situation that we're in, one of the items on that particular agenda was the municipal revenue sharing monies that were budgeted by the state and they needed to be approved by the bond commission before they could be distributed to the towns. For Plainville, that's $522,000. So from our perspective, that's the only thing they did that day. That was fine because that would, you know, pretty much put us in, you know, that's 522 of the 875 that we have, you know, remaining. And I feel confident that we'll reach the 100% by the time we get out to the end of, you know, the fiscal year. With regards to current taxes, we've received pretty much 99.99% of what we budgeted for current taxes. About $6,000 difference of the $42.9 million. We still need to collect $6,000 to reach 100%. The two-year average is 99.17% at this point in time. So we're running a little bit ahead of schedule as far as current taxes are concerned. With respect to the fund balance, slight change in that in that the council last year for fiscal year '17, general fund contribution capital, that was a higher number. You would ask that the town staff hold back spending on a couple of the projects, you know, so that less would come from the fund balance. And we've adjusted that number. I think that number was 202. We've adjusted that down to 2,000, you know, I don't think it was at 200. Yeah, I think it was at 202. There was a couple of projects you asked us to pull back on and not do. So we've, since we haven't done them this year, we've pulled that out. So that actually, you know, means that our fund balance is slightly higher than it was previous month. All right? As far as the special funds, recreation, airport fund, water pollution control, and the library, pretty much running, you know, previous trends, which is pretty much in line. We don't see anything of any great consequence there. We're pretty much running what we expected, if not a little bit ahead in some instances. The health insurance fund took a fairly good hit in the last two months. We're still running a, you know, a surplus, but it's a lot less than what it was a couple of months ago. We had some, we're self-insured so that there were some, you know, large claims that came in over the last two months. So we're running a surplus in the current fiscal year of about $138,000. And that's on a, you know, on a $5 million expected claims. So as far as the large projects are concerned, we added a couple of columns just to give you some additional information, which is, you know, and that's the column on the far right, which is, you know, the movement we've seen in the last month. So we've seen some movement on the old industry demolition. We paid, you know, some dollars that we owed to the tune of $12,500. And the road bond, that just started to gear up. A lot of work was done in April, but the payments probably wouldn't be, you know, to a great degree done and, you know, made until May. And we expect that there's going to be more expenditures moving forward. To date, you know, on the road bond, we spent $1.74 million. We, our goal is, by the time we get out to the end of the, this particular year, you know, we'll be closer to $3 million. We're trying to do $1 million a year. So we'll see an increase in paving going forward as soon as school lets out because we're going to be doing some paving over in that particular area of town as well. That's pretty much all I have on the financial dashboard. If you have any questions with regards to that, I'll try to answer them. Otherwise, I can turn it over to Scott for some happenings and then be available for any additional questions or comments you may have for us. Right? Sure.
The Plainville Coalition for Positive Youth Development is launching its annual underage drinking prevention campaign. Members of the public are invited to display brightly colored lawn signs stating, "We don't serve anyone under 21," which highlights the social host law. It is illegal to allow anyone under 21 to consume alcohol, even in private homes. Anyone who wishes to display this sign can contact Roberta Brown at the Plainville Youth Services at 860-793-0221, extension 261. From the tax office, the second installment of sewer bills are due this month. Taxpayers have until June 1st, 2017, to pay them. Over at the Senior Center, on Thursday, June 1st, from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM, they're offering a mental health 101 session at the Plainville Public Library. At 6:30, a light dinner will be served. And the program will be presented by Laurel Regan, APRN Director of Behavioral Health Hartford Healthcare at Home. And she will provide information on relevant mental health issues including opioid, heroin epidemic, depression, anxiety, bipolar disorders, schizophrenia, dementia, and hoarding. The evening will also include information on local resources available to assist residents of New Britain, Sullington, and Plainville. Now, this is open to all of the public. Call the Plainville Senior Center to register. And on Saturday, June 3rd, at 9:00 AM, they are celebrating National Trail Day at Sunset Rock Park and the Meta Comet Trail in Plainville. Take a local hike with the Plainville Conservation Commission to Sunset Rock. The four-mile round trip hike starts on the Meta Comet Trail. The hike continues through Sunset Rock State Park to Ledge Road in Plainville. This is a moderate hike with some steep grades. Directions for parking will be provided at the sign-up. This event is free. Please call the Senior Center to register. And they're offering at the Plainville Public Library in collaboration with the Senior Center, the Changing Brain Sessions, which will be hosted Wednesday, May 24th, May 31st, and June 7th at 6:00 PM. The first one on May 24th is Let's Talk About the Brain. They discuss what's normal and what's not, keeping your brain healthy, signs and symptoms of dementia. On May 31st, they are offering the Something Is Just Not Right. And it's an understanding of memory loss and how and who to see for the diagnosis, different types of dementia, and the hallmark symptoms of each. On June 7th, they are having the Healthy Caregiver Accepting Help discussion. And this is handling with finding and paying for resources, daily challenges, long-distance caregiving, and coping strategies. This is a free program. Light dinner is included. Please call the Senior Center to register for any and all of the sessions. At the Plainville Public Library, on Tuesday, May 16th, at 6:30 PM, they are offering a beginner guitar class. If you have always wanted to play guitar, this is a hands-on introductory class covering basic chords, strumming, rhythm, and chord progressions. They'll also cover playing basic single-note riffs of well-known songs. Students are recommended to bring their own guitars. On Thursday, May 18th, at 7:00 PM, come to the library for an author talk featuring Matthew Dix, the internationally bestselling author of the novels Memoirs of an Imaginary Friend, Something Missing, and the forthcoming The Other Man. He is the humor columnist for Seasons Magazine and has published work in the Hartford Current and Reader's Digest. He was an elementary school teacher for 18 years. Dix is a former West Hartford Teacher of the Year and finalist for Connecticut Teacher of the Year. And on May 31st, the library is offering a new monthly series called Great Discussions about America's foreign policy. Through balanced, nonpartisan discussions, this series will encourage citizens to understand and participate in the foreign policy process. And this is open to all. And on Tuesday, June 13th, from 2:00 to 4:30 PM, come to the library for a free blood pressure check and health screening where you can ask a regional nurse any and all of your health questions. And that is all I have.
Thanks, Scott. Does anybody have any questions for the town manager or for Scott on their reports?
No.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next section of our meeting is open to public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to speak to the town council. Please come to either podium, state your name and address, and you will be given three minutes. I have one person that has signed our sheet, and that would be John Kislik. John?
John Kislik, 65 Forestville Avenue. Good evening, town council.
Hello.
I'm still opposed to that Wheeler renovator's new project. I'm still fighting, do everything I can, writing about it, try to get it defeated. There's more and more things in there that are unnecessary. Looked at now that, when they connect, do that connection, their court is going to be filled with artificial turf. They're going to reconstruct the ball fields. I mean, this is on and on. It's too much. But my main thing tonight is our budget. When the people came to vote on our budget, you gave them a figure that they voted on, what the mill rate was going to be. I feel you're obligated to approve that mill rate with the budget you sent them. And I want to remind you, I told you before, our charter, Chapter 7, Financial Provisions, Section 5, "The town council shall set the budget in mils by June 1st." You just had town manager recommending that you violate the town charter. That's wrong. You'll be in violation of this charter. Section 15 of the same chapter says, "Any officer or employee who violates any section of this chapter is subject to removal." I don't think you're going to remove yourself. But this is serious stuff. We have a charter. And the thing is, we're sitting on undesignated fund balance. I could be wrong. You can correct me. I thought it's like $9 million. That's the taxpayers' money. This is our money. You set that mill rate and anything that has to be paid extra, that should come out of that money, that's our money. We've already paid that. And it's in reserve, doing nothing, collecting not much interest. And there still would be plenty left if you have to use that to pre-fund any capital project that may pass and come up. That's my opinion. Now, $9 million is a lot. It's a lot for pre-funding. And it should cover anything the state doesn't cover. We elected you to do what's right for the people. It's not right that you would go and reassess, raise our mill rates again, or the mill rate after we just had revaluation too. And all those figures you put in there, that's bad. That's sad. And it's wrong. Use the $9 million, if that's the right figure, I believe it's got to be close, and take care of anything that the state messes up on. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that didn't sign up? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. I'd like to, if I could, to the council, I'd like to preface this, my presentation to you folks and questions. And his purpose is not to tell voters how to vote on the school projects. That'll be their decision. It's just observations to the council from my point. Start with Madam Chair. I am requesting the town council revisit the proposed Wheeler School project before making any final decisions to vote for its acceptance. My request is based on how school and town project decisions have been made in the past. The current request for funding to pave the high school parking lot and the rush for the Wheeler School project based on state reimbursement funding. Bear with me now. I refer to the past being the Old Linden Street School project, in which the supposed purpose was the spending of $7 million to bring the school up to standards, and it was deemed unacceptable. Now, the topic is a $23 million Wheeler School project that seems to be sitting comfortably with some council members. I would respectfully remind the council that we are still waiting to resume the unusable high school track. If a high school track problem can cause legal issues, imagine what a $23 million old school renovation problem can cause. I've stated in prior town council meetings, and I will repeat it tonight, if the high school parking lot needs paving, so be it. But it should be presented to the town residents with its own referendum. This is a $1.7 million project with no connection whatsoever to the Wheeler School project and without state funding. Also disturbing is the fact that signs are popping up to vote yes for the Wheeler School project. Fine. But there is no mention that the same vote authorizes the high school parking lot paving project. And to that point, as a town council member representing the town residents, I would want to know why. Is that understood, Mr. Rizurko? Because you gave me the puzzle book.
Why, the signs are not coming from the town. Is that what you're?
No, no, no. If that's what we're voting on.
Private citizens are under no obligation to explain anything to anybody, honestly.
Say again.
Private residents, if they want to put signs to support something or not support something, that's up to them. They're under no obligation to explain.
No, who made the signs for them to put up?
Pardon me?
Who made the signs for them to put up?
I don't know.
Thank you.
You have to talk to the Wheeler.
Okay. I don't want to use up all my time arguing about something like that.
No, we're not arguing.
I understand.
I don't think we're, but no, there is a Wheeler School parent organization that's working towards passing the referendum. I'm sure the signs came from them.
The bottom line, Mr. Councilman Rizurko, is you're not only voting for the school.
Yep.
You're voting for a parking lot. And that is mentioned nowhere in that, on that sign.
Why would it mention it on the sign?
Because you're going to be paying for it. Because you're going to be paying for it as part of the school project. That's why.
I guess, well, we're to disagree, but that's, that's fine.
I wouldn't want to be backed into a corner, but sometimes you wonder just exactly what was going on, to your point.
Going on where?
If I may move on, because I'm running out of time, Mr. Wazorko.
They'll probably give you a little extra time.
Well, we'll let you finish.
Finally, finally, the Wheeler School renovation includes enhanced building security, replacement of aging, obsolete roofing, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and electrical systems, major and minor renovations on all program spaces, addition of air conditioning, like all other schools, separate parent and bus, and bus drop-off locations for better stool safety, complete ADA compliance, and improvement and increase to the parking lot and drainage. This was presented in a letter to the press by a town resident in favor of the renovations. I also saw more changes at the ordinance that was available on Internet. Madam Chair, after reading the letter several times, two thoughts came to mind. If this school is in such disarray, why are we allowing children in there in the first place?
Well, did you want me to answer that, or you just, do you have more questions? I, I, I think the, the answer to that is the school is not an unsafe facility for the students. It's not unsafe. They are completely able to function in there. However, roofs need to be replaced. The heating system is obsolete, which would, you know, a new heating system is going to be more efficient. It's going to do a better job of heating that school. That school does not have air conditioning. That will make their environment, their learning environment much better. The school is not unsafe.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Second, secondly, if the school is in such a state, perhaps the answer isn't a renovation like New Process, but demolish and build a new school. And that falls back to all the changes that have to be made. Now, if I go further on that, my thought reasoning is simple. Like all renovations of old goods, such as cars, furnitures, and homes, it never ends. As the project progresses, more undetected problems arise along with costs. This is at least a two-year project of an old building. What else is lurking out there? You wonder what else is lurking out there, as we were told regarding the old Linden Street School. Based on this fear, I will turn, based on this fear, this will turn into a never-ending, cash-devouring project and a strong possibility of a similar repeat of high school, of the high school track legitimate, legality dilemma. Did I make that clear?
Your opinion, yeah.
Okay, no, I didn't know, because I was babbling as I went along, but.
Not that they're related, but your opinion, yeah.
Okay, thank you. In concluding, I suggest a cost analysis of the build, of the building of a new Wheeler School as opposed to the current Renovator's new project. In doing so, it will not only give the council a better idea what path to take, but reassure town residents, after seeing the analysis, our town council considered all options before making the approving decision. And that's what I think. And I hope I didn't offend any of our council members.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Mrs. Saunders?
Hi again. Andrea Saunders, 55 Lawn Drive. I wanted to just follow up on Mr. Frangos's comments. I know he was speaking to Mr. Wazorko. I think what he was trying to say was, there's a parents, and I know, because I'm on all the emails, I'm not on the committee, but with the Wheeler parents have an organization that they are focusing on getting the Wheeler School referendum passed. I think what his point was is, they're not under any obligation to promote the, the high school parking lot, but it is one project, it is on there as one referendum question. Is that correct? It's not split, so it's going to be one question.
It's, it's much smaller compared to the Wheeler School.
Right, right, but there, I think his point was that they purchased the signs. If they say under $1,000, which they are, they bought their own signs. They're contacting all the people they want to vote for it. So they're doing that of their own volition. It's nothing the town is doing, it's nothing the board is doing. They're doing it all on their own, and they're under, they can do that as private citizens. That's why they're only promoting the Wheeler School. They don't have to put on their vote for Wheeler on the high school parking lot. But if they vote for one, they're voting for both. So hopefully that clarifies the question. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody, I'm going to make sure nobody else has a chance that wants to speak. It's an opportunity. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, sir.
David Spencer, 127 Milford Street Extension, Apartment 7B. Councilman Wazorko had a letter published in the last week's Citizen, and I just, I wondered maybe a little clarification or a couple, on a couple of his points possibly. He wrote, "As we pay off older debt, our yearly principal and interest payments drop." I mean, technically, when I pay off, as I pay off my mortgage, my yearly interest drops, but my yearly principal payments go up, which is actually a good thing. And I'm thinking of a debt being structured with a, a constant monthly or, you know.
It's not level debt. It's not level debt. Level principal, but not level debt. So the principal doesn't go up, and it, and the interest doesn't go down. It's, it's level principal, not level debt. It's not the same as a mortgage. It's not the same. So, so, so debt does go down as the principal goes down, the interest goes down.
Well, yeah, sure, the debt goes down, but does the payment go down?
Yes, the payment goes down, because it's level principal, not level debt.
Okay.
As the principal's paid off, you pay less interest, so the debt goes down.
Okay.
That's the way it's done on town financing of large projects. It's not the same as a mortgage.
I'm being educated, so.
Yeah, that's a question we tried to answer.
Okay, and then, it's also, your taxes will stay flat with regards to debt service, therefore, no tax increase. It will be due to these projects. I mean, can, can we really say that? Is that a promise?
Yes.
Okay, boss.
And we also, just to tag along the town manager, we also have projects, you know, we're talking every project. When I say debt, it's every project we've ever done. And we actually have projects that we're actually finished paying off in the next few years. So that principal and interest payment is falling completely off. And we just happen to have a situation over the next five to 10 years, where we have quite a bit of older projects actually, we finished paying them off. And there's some significant, I don't want to say.
Well, I'm not privy, sorry.
No, and that's fine, I understand. I'm glad you're asking the question.
It's on the Internet, though. It's on the Internet. It's on the webpage.
Yeah.
If you need to find it, we can send it to you.
And that's, and that's, I think, a combination of those two things.
Okay, well, I mean.
Position we're in right now.
Million dollars a year for.
I think it's $1.5.
Roads, you know, another whatever we're having to pay for the sewage.
That's all included in that.
Plan, you know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, another million to tear down a building. You know, I mean, it seems like, hey, that adds up after a while. I mean, the only other, other thing would be, you know, as was mentioned, right now, the governor is doing the state equivalent of rummaging through the seat cushions looking for money. I mean, tolls, taxes on soft drinks, increase the bottle. I mean, it's, it's like, it's crazy. So, I mean, we really have to understand that situation and that whatever they are promising, I don't think it's promising us each year is not written in stone. So, no, we got to be very, very careful, you know, and see where this, this shakes out. And, I mean, he's, he's deciding, you know, the rich people who have been, you know, in my opinion, overtaxed are just getting fed up, and that, that, that's it. So, I mean, I mean, this is, it's a 10, 15-year-in-the-making problem, which nobody addressed 10 or 15 years ago, which, who knows what's going to happen. The only other thing, I'd, I'd like to, I'm not really even sure how I'm going to vote on this yet. I'm leaning against it. I wish it was broken down into halves, but it's not, you know, on the June 6th vote. But I would love to see some kind of directive come down from the superintendent to the, the teachers, the principals, the administrators, whoever, the Board of Education employees, to leave the parents alone, to not do, do so much politicking as, as was done before the budget. I mean, they have a captive audience, they have young parents who are busy, aren't really paying attention, and suddenly they're being scared that, you know, somehow if the Board of Education doesn't get its next half or three-quarters of a million dollars, you know, we're going to deteriorate into some kind of Third World education system. And, you know, when they have a captive audience like that, and, you know, nobody is able to give possibly a counterpoint of view, now, how can that possibly be a fair, fair election? So, I mean, as far as, you know, voting on more Board of Education projects, can't we just leave the parents alone from within the schools? You know, let them seek out the issues on their own, make their own decisions, and not possibly be manipulated or, you know, coerced into making an uninformed vote the way the Board of Education wants them to vote? You know, I mean, it's, it's, I, I don't like it, you know, because, I mean, I know people who don't like, who've been in there, walk, you know, come to pick up their kids, you know, after school, and, and they're being politic.
Mr. Spencer?
Yeah?
The, the town and the Board of Education are prohibited from advocating for or against this project once the referendum date has been set.
I would, okay.
It was set by the town council in early May, so they, they're prohibited by statute from advocating, spending any dollars to advocate for this project.
Okay, well, I, I'm not spending money.
To answer your question, you're not going to, you're not going to hear that happen in anything between now and June 6th. Now, individual members can write letters to the editor or have conversations.
Yeah, that's fine.
But the school cannot expend any effort to advocate for, against a building project since the council voted on May 1st.
Okay, that applies to everybody.
In the school system.
In the school system, during school hours.
During school hours.
When they, okay, I hope they obey it.
The only thing they could do is tell you when, when the vote is, you know, when the vote's going to be.
All right.
The date of the vote. They can't advocate for or against the project.
Yeah, well, that, that's all I want, you know, just to.
Well, I'm just telling you, you already have that.
Well, I mean, a directive, not every, maybe, not everybody's obeying this some directive.
You already have that.
Well, I appreciate it. Maybe it can just be reinforced, please.
They know it. Nothing's happened since May 1st in the school system to advocate for, against the project.
Yeah, I'm not talking about official policy. I'm talking about any individual taking it on their own to approach their.
Their what?
The kids they're teaching, parents as they pick up their kids.
In the school system, they can't do it. Not as they can.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Anybody else? Okay, closed. Public comments, move on. We have no old business under new business. We still need to do some more deliberation, so.
Motion to approve the tax ref, tax refunds is listed on the addendum, Madam Chair.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will reconvene into our executive session.
A couple items before.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
Other discussions of interest?
I did not mean to ignore that part.
Couple of things. One is, you know, the Capital Projects Building Committee has been working on this Wheeler School project and the high school parking lot project for over two years. They've looked at a lot of different aspects, and they brought this recommendation forward to both the Board of Education and the town council. You know, the notion that we need to look at it again is, you know, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense in terms of, you know, how, how long do you have to look at something? And, you know, and especially for backing up against a potential loss of state, state funding. So this isn't something that came up at the last second and has been studied for a long time. And I, and I believe it's time to vote on it. With respect to the parking lot, it's, it's very clear that in all of the discussions that have happened as far as this project is concerned, is that it does include the parking lot. Whether some people choose to emphasize that or not, it's certainly up to them. But, you know, for anybody who's, you know, the, the resolution that was passed and the discussions, that it, it does include the parking lot. People may want the, you know, it to vote separated so that they can be for one or against the other. That was a policy decision that was made by the council, and, you know, and you have your reasons for doing it. And, but I think it's very clear in, in any discussions that we've had as far as the town is concerned, that, you know, the projects are combined, and it includes both. With regards to the town charter and the mill rate, you know, the town council is certainly aware of, you know, a Supreme Court decision that was made with regards to, in another community that talks about town charters and, and the dates that are in charter requirements and how the Supreme Court has decided that in, you know, particular circumstances, you know, and especially these circumstances where there's, where there's, where the, you know, where the dates are really at, at convenience and not really part of, you know, the whole, you know, you're not skipping a process, it's really a convenience that you do it at a certain time, that the towns can, you know, have the ability to, to make some adjustments as far as, and go, you know, beyond the charter. I know the council's aware of that. Certainly, if any citizens want to, you know, see that information, we could certainly share it with them. So, you know, we're standing in concert with, you know, with existing law and, and, you know, Supreme Court decisions that have been made at, you know, at the Connecticut level. And I know that the council is, is well, well aware of that. We've made it very clear during the budget process that what people vote on is the expenditure increase, and we were very clear that, especially given this year, that the, you know, the, the mill rate that was talked about was an estimate, and it was really going to be greatly dependent upon the revenues that were received at the state, at the state level, and that those revenues, given the, the circumstances surrounding, you know, the state budget and the state fiscal crisis, that those could, those could change dramatically. And that, you know, that the mill rate, it wasn't a promise that that was going to be the mill rate. And we were very clear during all of our presentations, and even since then, that it could change one way or the other. And it would be fiscally irresponsible to just say, well, we're going to take it all out of fund balance, given the, the chances of numbers, the numbers that are being talked about here. The council may decide, when the numbers are known, that, that it makes, you know, a certain amount of sense to do some of that in that particular fashion. The council may decide that it makes sense to cut back on some expenditures. The council may decide that they, they, they need to raise the mill rate up a little bit more than what they, than what was talked about, or a combination of all three. You know, and, and this was made very clear during the budget process, and, and, you know, the notion that, you know, that people voted on the budget based upon, you know, what the, what the mill rate increase is going to be is, you know, at least in my opinion, you know, pushing it a little bit. I think what people saw was it's a 1.5%, 3% increase in expenditures, and, you know, and that's a very reasonable increase to the budget, given all the other circumstances. It certainly is in line with, with, you know, what we've seen in the past five or six years as far as the town is concerned. So, you know, I know, you know, you get down to this time of the year, and people want to talk about the influence that they make, and, you know, at, at these meetings, but there's, you know, I think it's important for people to be reminded of, of, you know, the process and that we're not going against just doing willy-nilly what we feel needs to be done here. And trust that our town council will do what's in the best interest of all citizens in the community.
Just on, on a similar topic, I had mentioned I attended a meeting in Hartford with the town manager and some senators and representatives that are struggling with this whole problem that we have. And I spoke to a representative from an adjoining town, and the way they prepared their budget, and they were, they were getting ready to vote on it. Initially, they had the entire amount of the teachers' retirement put into their budget, which was a massive number compared to what Plainville was looking at. They actually included that in their budget. What they finally ended up with, they backed off some of it, and they included 50% of that number. of that number in their budget for next year. So they've already included that in. Now, if this does not go through, in Hartford, they're setting a tax rate on an inflated expenditure that they may never have to do, at least for next year. I don't know how it's all gonna turn out subsequent years, or even for next year, but there's a, there's a number put into their budget anticipating something catastrophic. So it's a very difficult balance. We have decided to not include that teacher's retirement number in our budget, and we're going to wait and see how it all ends up. We're talking about very large numbers of money here, though. It's not a couple thousand dollars. Millions and millions of dollars are at stake here.
And there are other communities, Southington being one, that has delayed their budget process until the state, you know, going outside of their charter requirements as well, based upon, you know, the Supreme Court decision that was made, and, you know, you know, so there, you know, and, and we're only talking about, you know, we're only talking about, you know, a week beyond our charter. We're not talking about months, you know, so...
Right.
So the notion that, you know, we're doing something, you know...
Illegal?
Illegal is, is, you know, stretching a little bit. Actually, a lot.
We're trying to do the best we can without overreacting one way or the other. I'm certainly not a proponent of putting a number into a budget that's going to increase taxes when it may not be necessary right now. And so I would like to wait until, I would, I would wait as long as I could before I make that mill rate decision, but we have to get something going here before the tax bills go out. Otherwise, you end up sending out, you know, tax bills that have to be adjusted further down the road. It makes it difficult for not, not only the town and the folks that have to calculate that, but for the people that have to pay those taxes. If you get a tax bill in July, and then you get another one in September, this becomes very, very difficult for a lot of people who are, who are walking a very fine line with their budgets and with their revenues, and what they personally can plan on for their expenditures, not to mention what healthcare cost is gonna do, because that is the biggest mystery out there, and I can only probably surmise it's not going to get less, but probably more for a great many people. So it's difficult. We're doing the best we can with the information we have at this point in time, and I assure you, before any final decision is made, there will be conversation about it. It won't be done in, in secret. People will know what it is, why we're doing what we're doing, and they're, we're going to fully articulate that, so everybody understands what our plan is. So it's a mystery for everybody, and we hope to do the best that we can.
And it is possible that, you know, that we may know something before even June first, so...
Sure. I hope so. Anything else? Robert, that was it for you?
No, it's just that, we, we, you know, we're gonna continue our executive session that we had, you know, we weren't able to finish up. There is a possibility we may take action on the item under new business, you know, eleven A, eleven one, so we'll come out of the executive session.
Okay. May I have a motion to, I guess?
Madam Chair?
Reconvene back into our executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session on a contract negotiation.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.[1766.86]